We're going to begin tonight's study session. We have two items on the agenda. The first is a discussion regarding the poet laureate program. Take it away.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to start by just telling you a little about who we are and why we're here. My name is Hillary Kuhn. I am the Information Services Manager at the Norman Public Library Central. I want to go ahead and pass out.
Oh, yeah.
And this is Joshua Conill. He's going to pass out some paperwork about what we're talking about so you'll know. He is one of my information professionals at the library. We also have with us our branch manager, Caroline Dolworth, over there for moral support and Q and A assistance. So, thank you. So, a little background on what we're doing. The Norman Public Library has done an annual poetry competition and poetry celebration for 27 years. It is a beloved program in the community and every year around this time, we start getting calls from people asking, "Are you doing your poetry competition?" You know, they're really excited about it and want to participate. We have participants from elementary all the way up through the oldest community members. So, it's a really fun event. So, last year after our virtual poetry celebration, Mayor Clark asked us to look into creating a Norman poet laureate program. And so, I had Joshua here do some research and put forward a proposal. And fast forward a year, and here we are. So, I'm going to let him take it away and tell you about what he came up with.
Thanks. Thanks for having us. I'm going to try my best to take up as little of your time as possible. You all are very busy people doing important work. So, if you're not familiar with the idea of a poet laureate, this is a position, an honorary position, created by cities or academic institutions or arts organizations. For centuries, they've been in existence and their role is to champion poetry and the written word and literacy in their communities, to serve as sort of role models for artists in their cities and areas, and to have an opportunity to hone their own craft. So, yeah, that's what we're looking at here. And most people who are familiar with the idea of the poet laureate know of it on the national level. So, I've got just an assortment of current poets laureate pictured here. So, there is a National U.S. Poet Laureate. There's also a U.S. Youth Poet Laureate. You're probably familiar with Amanda Gorman, who was the former U.S. Youth Poet Laureate, who read at President Biden's inauguration. The current U.S. Poet Laureate, Joy Harjo, is a native Tulsa and Muskogee citizen. And we have, beyond the national level, there are also state poet laureates, poets laureate. So, 46 U.S. states, including and Washington, D.C., all currently have poet laureate positions. Oklahoma has had a poet laureate position. It's been codified since 1994, but we've actually, the tradition goes back to 1923 was our first poet laureate. So, there's a long tradition of poetry in Oklahoma. And our current U.S. poet laureate, or Oklahoma poet laureate, Joe Krieger, was appointed by Governor Sit last year and is actually going to be a judge at this year's Norman Poetry Writing Contest, which is very exciting. And a former Oklahoma poet laureate, Nathan Brown, has also agreed to be a judge. So, it's just great to get to see all these sort of webs crossing and getting to see young poets get to have their stuff read by people who are, I don't know, have been at it for a long time and have, yeah, their word means a lot. So, that's, that was a tangent. I'm just very, I'm excited about the poetry writing contest. But we actually found out that there is a lot of precedent for cities having poet laureate programs. So, I've got pictured here Santa Fe, Houston, Los Angeles, and Philadelphia are four of the dozens of cities that we ran across who currently have poet laureate programs. The last three there, Houston, L.A. and Philadelphia, those actually are library and city government partnerships, just like what we're proposing today. And actually, the national program is overseen by the Library of Congress. The U.S. poet laureate is appointed by the Librarian of Congress. So, there's a long precedent for the kind of thing we're proposing, which is a program partnership between the city and the public library to establish this position. So, what we're pitching to you is a program that would be a two-year appointment. We would have a committee of people representing Norman Public Schools, University of Oklahoma, various arts organizations listed here. That committee would select from people who have been nominated a poet laureate for the city, who would serve a two-year term with the possibility of being reappointed to it or re-selected for a second year. As people sort of filter out of two-year roles on that committee, they would re-select people from the same organizations. So, we have representatives from a variety of stakeholders in the city overseeing the program. The poet's role would be to generally sort of be a spokesperson and representative for the arts in the city. They would be available to participate in public city events. They could speak before, share a poem before a council meeting. They could speak at a building's opening, for instance. They would be sort of expected to give a few public readings throughout their term and work with the committee to select sort of a major project during the term that they would get to focus on. We're also proposing that there would be a $500 honorarium for whoever fills that role. And the Friends of the Norman Library have committed to pay for half of that already. That's basically it. We think that this is a great opportunity, just like the poetry writing contests. This is not only an opportunity for us as the library to be involved in arts in the city, but to demonstrate a long-term commitment. We've been doing this contest for 26, 27 years, and we think that this is something that could be a very, very long-term investment in artists in our city, so.
Are there any other Oklahoma cities that have a poet laureate?
I am not aware of any.
Oh, boy.
We could be the first.
Well, she mentioned that I requested it, but of course, it came from one of our very creative residents here in Norman. It was not my idea, and I appreciate him passing that fork because I think it's a really neat program. And if you look at the logo, I'm very proud of it. It's got both our little compass type thing and the PLS logos in the book, and so, that's cool. Councilor Hall?
I was just going to say, we had the pleasure of getting the sneak preview presentation at Community Planning and Transportation, or BACA, sorry. Got to get my committee straight last week, and I think it's just a marvelous idea and appreciate all the work that you've invested in it. And, you know, certainly can find the matching 250 without too much trouble to support our part in it. But I just fully support and really want to thank you all for bringing this to us. This is a community that really values the arts, and this is just another way to highlight another art form and love being the first city in Oklahoma that has a poet laureate.
Councilor Lynn?
Not that this is a big difference, but is that, is that 500 for the term or is that per year of the term?
I think that we have it written now that it is for the full term, so it would be.
It's really just sort of in mind.
You're asking, demanding $125 per year?
Very bold of us.
How dare you!
We are a library!
Let me think about it.
Any other comments or questions? I think mine would be, last one would be the timeline. So, when are we hoping to put together this committee and select our first poet laureate?
Great question. We are prepared to get moving as quickly as possible. We would love to get a committee put together. We already have a few people who've expressed interest in getting a committee put together by the end of the month. And since the poetry contest is in April for National Poetry Month, it concludes with this big poetry celebration event where we announce the winners and let sort of anyone who wants to come read their own poetry. That is on April 27th. So, we would love to have a committee by the end of March who could review nominations so that we could announce the poet laureate at the poetry celebration at the end of April.
Perfect. When are we going to announce, like, we're taking applications or nominations?
Like tomorrow? Right, as soon as you guys say go for it, we will, we're running a.
Hey, I think it's fantastic. I always love a good collaboration.
Can council members be on the committee?
No, but I can.
City of Norman, I just want you to hear that, what we have to deal with here.
That's right. That's right.
I think it was discussed last week as whether, like, should we have, does it say exactly?
It says the mayor's office, so I'm sure I could designate someone if I wasn't interested in participating. But I am, so there. And I know I'm going to reach out from the University of Oklahoma to honorary Jeffers. If you don't know who that is, her book that she recently had released, The Love Songs of W.B. Du Bois, was named Oprah's Book Club. So, she's blowing up right now, and I think it'd be neat to have her participate. So, I'll be reaching out to her soon. Councilor Hall?
I think one of the things we did try to work out, just the technicality of it all, was that it would be a lead program for the Pioneer Library System so that we could expedite and get it going. So, however that needs to be done.
So, it will not be a mayor's committee. I want to clarify that. We had a planning discussion and decided that it would be far easier to do it that way.
Yeah, exactly.
Councilor Schuler?
Just another suggestion from the university. World Literature Today might be another good entity that does a lot of stuff with poetry and other literature. And they bring, they have had, I think, future or former poet laureates of other places as, you know, speakers that have come to OU and things like that. So, they would be a great.
You're R.C., so I can reach out then.
Me too. I work in that building.
We got charged together.
Oh, and I'll also throw out seeing the depot on this list. Timing was perfect for bringing it back because like a week after the library was like, "You still wanting to do this?" The depot reached out and said, "Hey, we're going to do this." I'm like, "Okay, let's get everyone on the same page." And they were more than happy to participate in this way as opposed to running it because they saw what a great fit it was with our library system.
Is this also the same time as Norman Music Festival? Oh, look, it's Stephen, like Stephen's going to know. It's week four, okay. Like, that would be cool. We could, like, pump it up at Norman Music Festival.
Absolutely.
Now, April is a happening month. We got Medieval Fair first weekend, our poetry week of activities and new poet laureate, and then return of Norman Music Fest.
Are we having a really new fair this year?
Earth Day.
Yes. What was that?
Earth Day.
Oh, and the Earth Day Festival. There will be.
And my birthday.
See?
My birthday.
Nice job.
April's happening.
That's right. If you're bored in Norman, it's your own fault. All right, I think we will go ahead and move forward unless I hear any cries of outrage. Let's do this thing. Okay, thank you for your time and for your work on this project.
Very excited. Thank you guys for having us. Appreciate it.
Excellent.
Good times, good times.
All right. While they are clearing out, before, has anyone not gotten something to eat? Because you, we're about to have executive session and you could grab it and circle back. Nope, we're good. Okay, our second item is consideration of adjourning into an executive session as authorized by Oklahoma Statutes Title 25, Section 307b3 to discuss the acquisition of Rightofway in connection with the Porter Avenue Streetscape 2019 Bond Project. All right, all those in favor?
We are.
Okay, we are in executive session.
and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority meeting of March 8, 2022. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Studley?
Here.
Councilmember Schuler?
Here.
Councilmember Lynn?
Here.
Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Councilmember Tortorello?
Here.
Councilmember Holman?
Here.
Councilmember Foreman?
Here.
Councilmember Peacock?
Here.
Mayor Clark?
Here. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I will go ahead and move forward. We will be having a presentation from Dr. Bratsler this evening. He is in clinic, so when he joins it, we'll just jump on over to that. But for now, item one, approval of the minutes. Consideration of the minutes as follows. City Council Special Session Minutes of November 9th and November 16th, 2021. City Council, Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority Minutes of January 25th, 2022. I need a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is to approve the minutes. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Hang on a second. Do that again, guys. Go ahead and vote again, please. I cut it off early accidentally. A vote to have been cast, and the motion to approve the minutes passes unanimously.
All right. Item two, Resolution 2122-99. A resolution of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, awarding the 2021 City of Norman Human Rights Award in conjunction with the Norman Human Rights Commission. I need a motion to adopt or reject the resolution.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to approve the minutes, excuse me, approve the resolution. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
A vote to have been cast, and the motion is adopted unanimously.
Thank you. A resolution of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, awarding the 2021 City of Norman Human Rights Award in conjunction with the Norman Human Rights Commission. Whereas, the City of Norman entrusts the Norman Human Rights Commission with the duties of studying problems of discrimination, advising city council on human rights issues, and coordinating citizen involvement in the promotion of human rights. And whereas, the Norman Human Rights Commission seeks to promote and encourage fair treatment and mutual understanding among all citizens, and to combat all prejudice, bigotry, and discrimination that prevent individuals from reaching their full potential as human beings. And whereas, after receiving nominations from the Norman community, the Norman Human Rights Commission selects an individual or group to receive the Norman Human Rights Award based on exceptional achievement, outstanding effort, and/or leadership to promote human rights inequality, and to serve as an example to all. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, that the City of Norman, Oklahoma, in conjunction with the Norman Human Rights Commission, does hereby award the 2021 City of Norman Human Rights Award to the Norman Coalition for Refugee Support. I'd like to recognize Brent Smith, on behalf of the Norman Coalition for Refugee Support, to accept the award.
Thank you, Mayor. I just brought a couple of folks here from our core leadership. We have many people, and our 50-plus volunteers, and here we have one of our co-founders, Dee Fink, and then our Treasurer, Lance Rolfus, and our Housing Chair, Jean Kate. And just want to thank you for this coveted award. We've seen many recipients over many years receive this award. We're just very humbled and grateful to you. And so on behalf of 50-plus volunteers, and all the last months, last eight months of heartwarming, hard work. We've met and built relationships with these families. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Congratulations. All right. It appears that Dr. Bratsler has joined us. I've asked him to provide a general update on the ongoing COVID situation and the new CDC guidelines. Dr. Bratsler, I will turn it over to you. Did he hear any of that? Nope, we were muted. All right. Dr. Bratsler, we're going to turn it over to you.
Oh, okay. Thank you. So do you mind if I share my screen real quick?
Please do.
Okay. Just one second to do that. All right. You should be able to see it now.
Yes, we can.
All right. So thank you for inviting me to give a, this I promise will be a very, very brief presentation about COVID-19, because most of the news is really good at this point. Cases have come down dramatically since we saw this enormous surge of Omicron cases in January. Just recognize, we got up to, one day we had almost 15,000 new cases reported in the state. Today, the Health Department reported 1,600 in the past four days, so we're averaging somewhere around 400 cases a day, which takes us down to 15 cases per 100,000 population per day right now. So that's all really good news. Cases are way down. A lot of people are vaccinated now. Some people have had the infection, and all of that will contribute to some protection from this virus. I did point out a couple of times, though, to the press this week, that we've been there before. And the arrows on this slide highlight how low we've been before. In June of last year, we got down to three cases per 100,000. After Delta, we got down to 15 cases per 100,000, and that's about where we're at now with Omicron. So barring some new variant, though, I feel fairly confident that we could have, it's not going to go away. We're going to continue to see patients getting infected with COVID-19. The cases have come down very, very dramatically. That's where we're at in Oklahoma as of today. Just a couple of other quick points to make. So in Norman, this past week, the data gets updated only once a week on Wednesdays, and so tomorrow we'll get new data. But Norman was down to 19 cases a day in the city limits. These are people that listed Norman as a address. So again, you can see the cases in Norman have dropped dramatically, just as they have in the rest of the state and country. But there are still people getting infected. About 19 people in Norman are getting infected on a daily basis. And good news, hospitalizations have also come down again. The State Health Department stopped doing daily situation reports. And I don't have another good source of data to capture hospitalizations at this point. We'd finally fallen below 500 people in the hospital last Friday. 24% of those people were in the intensive care unit, and I'm hopeful that these numbers have continued to decline. Though, I'm not sure I'll know any more data on hospitalizations until we see the weekly report that the Health Department will put out on Thursdays. But the good news- will put out on Thursdays. But the good news is, we're back down to hospitalization rates that were about where we were when we finished the Delta surge this past fall. Then the last graphic I'm going to show you is the new CDC map, which shows community levels of COVID transmission. The map is based on three data points. The first is the number of new cases of COVID per day that the county has. Secondly, how many of your hospital beds are full with COVID patients? And then third, how many new COVID admissions is your, are your hospital seeing each day, actually, over the past week? You can see Cleveland County is now in the green, which means there's low community transmission. Actually, check your hospitalization numbers. They're quite low at this point. And so with this particular map, CDC now recommends that you can go without wearing masks routinely. So I've had a couple of conversations with Mayor Clark, just to highlight that there is one challenge that we are still facing with this pandemic, and that's how we protect those people who are the most vulnerable. There've been a number of studies that have shown that when certain people get COVID-19, they don't do particularly well. First, the elderly, that's a risk factor. Being immunocompromised, for instance, do you have people in the community that have had organ transplants or on chemotherapy for cancer? So that's a population of people who are at particular risk. And then there are certain medical conditions that are known to be risk factors for COVID-19 that include things like diabetes, chronic lung disease, heart disease, patients with liver disease, kidney disease. All of those people are at increased risk of complications if they get COVID-19. So I think, you know, what I've asked people to do is at least be mindful of the people that you're around. And if you know you're in a crowd where there may be people who are particularly immunocompromised, certainly, one of the courteous things to do is to continue to wear a mask in those settings to prevent infection and encourage those people to be wearing masks also. It's part of our messaging that we need for the people who are at risk of complications of the disease to be aware of it and do certain things to protect themselves. And I sent Brenda a highlight, a handout for use that I'm trying to get people to recognize. But there's one really good thing that's in place now that we didn't have a year ago. We have very effective treatments for COVID-19, very effective treatments. So if one of those high-risk people does have a positive test and is having symptoms, it's very, very important that they seek treatment early. And they seek treatment with some of the drugs that we now have that have good evidence that they will prevent the complications of the disease. So we have antiviral pills, we have monoclonal antibodies, we have one monoclonal antibody we give to people who aren't infected but are at high risk, like organ transplant patients or cancer patients. We use a lot of it, for instance, at the Stevenson Cancer Center, because it will give a person six months of protection from COVID-19. I think part of the big messaging that we need to change at this point is, how do we protect the most vulnerable in our communities? And how do we make sure that if they do get infected, because COVID's not going to go away. We're going to continue to see COVID cases periodically. How do we make sure that if they have a positive test, that they seek and get treatment as quickly as possible? So Mayor Clark, I'm happy to answer any questions. I just wanted to give that brief overview. Good news, Norman, Cleveland County are doing quite well at this point, and I think we can all breathe a bit easier right now.
Thank you so much for that, Dr. Bratsler. This item wasn't on our agenda, so we can't ask all that many questions, just pointing that out. But I wanted to share this information with you. I still meet with my emergency management team. What are we up to? 105 or something meetings? So we never stop meeting and discussing public health in our community. I want you all to know that. We are on the right track. As Dr. Bratsler pointed out, there's just better treatments and vaccinations and all the things. So, Dr. Bratsler, one thing I did want to clarify or ask you to clarify, what about second boosters? I've been getting a lot of questions about that.
Yeah. Currently, there is no recommendation for a second booster. Now remember, highly immunocompromised people, we actually give three shots for the first series, and then we give them one booster. So they get four shots. But for people who are otherwise healthy at this point, the recommendation is that you get the two shots plus one booster. Because even though we saw people with Omicron, we saw people who were fully vaccinated, some who had received their boosters, who got COVID-19, their chance of being hospitalized or having complications of the disease was almost trivial compared to people who were unvaccinated. So it's currently recommended that you give one booster dose. There is no current recommendation to get another booster dose, because it appears that the vaccines that we first started using, December of 2020, we're using the same ones today, and the protection against hospitalization and death is holding up very, very well for those vaccines. Is it possible we'll have boosters in the future? Absolutely. A lot of people feel like COVID-19 may end up being a seasonal disease like the flu. And so none of us know yet whether we'll need annual COVID boosters or some other vaccine. But at this point, there is no current recommendation to get another booster dose.
Thank you. And then my last question, another one I'm getting a lot from constituents, what about the status of the vaccination for children under six?
Yeah. So we're still waiting on data from Pfizer. When Pfizer did the study in kids between the ages of two and five, essentially, well, I guess up to two, up to four, what they found was that the vaccine, two doses, didn't seem to give as good a protection as they had hoped for. It did in some of the kids, but not all of them. So there were two possible reasons for it. One is they reduced the dose a lot from the dose that we will give a five to 11-year-old at this time. So the dose is quite substantially lower, and that may be the reason that the kids aren't getting a good immune response. The other thing they found was that some kids are requiring three doses of the vaccine, but that's actually fairly common with childhood vaccines, to require multiple doses to build up the immune system. So Pfizer still has their study of their vaccine ongoing for young kids, but the data hasn't been released yet or sent to FDA for possible approval.
Okay. Well, thank you so much, Dr. Bratsler, for your time tonight, but for your time in all of those meetings and everything that you've done to lead our state during this historic pandemic. You are very appreciated, and I consider you one of my personal heroes. So thank you for everything.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Take care. And one thing I will note about the masking, I carry one with me out of respect to put on when someone else is wearing a mask. We talked a lot about personal freedom throughout all of this. It goes both ways. So please respect people who are wearing a mask, and respect that they might have someone at home that is immunocompromised that they're trying to protect. So let's continue to treat each other again with respect and grace as we hopefully find our way out of the COVID-19 pandemic here in our community. Back to item three, Proclamation 2122-26. A proclamation of the mayor of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming the month of March, 2022, as Women's History Month in the City of Norman. I'll also point out that today is International Women's Day. So happy International Women's Day to all the women out there. I need a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
Second.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast and the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. A proclamation of the mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming the month of March, 2022, as Women's History Month in the City of Norman. Whereas, we proudly recognize that women of all races, nationalities, and cultures have always played a critical role in history. And whereas, the 2020 History Month is women providing healing, promoting hope. And whereas, the 20th century made way for the recognition of women's achievements. In March of 1980, President Jimmy Carter signed the first presidential proclamation celebrating Women's History Week. And whereas, we acknowledge the contributions of brave women who continue to lobby for equity and made way for the 1987 Joint Resolution of the United States Congress declaring the entire month of March as Women's History Month. And whereas, in Norman, we are proud of the rich value for diversity and gender equity through local organizations such as Women in Action for All, Latinas Win, Women in Norman, University of Oklahoma Women in Gender Study, and Women's Resource Center, among others. And whereas, the Women's Alliance, a City of Norman Employee Resource Group established in 2021, also provides support, representation, and mentorship to women in Norman. And whereas, we honor and recognize all women who contribute day to day to enrich our community through their work in arts, sports, science, politics, and education. Professionals, frontline workers, caretakers, and mothers, aunts and grandmothers, as women greatly contribute to the healing and hope of our homes and our country. Now therefore, I, Mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim the month of March, 2022, as Women's History Month in the City of Norman, and invite all citizens to join me in celebrating women in the history of their contributions. I'd now like to recognize Caroline Dolworth from the Norman Central Library and Pioneer Library System to accept the proclamation.
Thank you. I'm honored to accept this proclamation on behalf of the women in our community and the Pioneer Library System, which seeks to support and empower women through our materials, programs, and services. We are especially proud of our recent and 19th Annual Crowns Tea Program, a celebration of the history and lives of African-American women, and to offering something for all ages, from coding classes for girls, health programs at the library and the well, partnerships with local organizations who assist women, and career services for upward mobility. Thank you for having me.
Thank you. To celebrate International Women's Day, I did have a mentoring walk scheduled, which was part of a Vital Voices programming effort from around the world. There were only three cities in the United States that I had seen that were assigned to participate, Miami, Boston, I think, and Norman. However, it was real cold today. So we are going to reschedule that, and it's an excellent opportunity for whoever wants to join. We will be walking around Andrews Park, and I've invited department heads and other city staff to join us as well. So again, you can build your network and mentorship opportunities. Item four, a proclamation 2122-27. A proclamation of the mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming the month of March as American Red Cross Month in the City of Norman. I need a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
So moved.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast and the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. A proclamation of the mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming the month of March, 2022, as American Red Cross Month in the City of Norman. Whereas, in times of crisis, people in the City of Norman come together to care for one another, and this humanitarian spirit is part of the foundation of the community and is exemplified by American Red Cross volunteers. Whereas, in 1881, Clara Barton founded the American Red Cross, turning her steadfast dedication for helping others into a bold mission of preventing and alleviating people's suffering. And more than 140 years later, we honor the kindness and generosity of Red Cross volunteers in the City of Norman who continue to carry out Clara's lifesaving legacy. And whereas, the contributions of local Red Cross volunteers give hope to the most vulnerable in their darkest hours. Whether it is providing emergency shelter, food, and comfort for families devastated by local disasters like house fires, severe storms, and floods, donating essential blood for accident and burn victims, heart surgery, and organ transplant patients, or those receiving treatment for leukemia, cancer, or sickle cell disease. And whereas, the American Red Cross also serves as the bridge between more than generous blood donors and millions of patients in need each year, delivering a wide range of high-quality blood products and blood donor and patient testing services. And whereas, the American Red Cross supports service members and veterans along with their families and caregivers through the unique challenges of military life, helping to save the lives of others with first aid, CPR, and other skills, or delivering international humanitarian aid. Now therefore, I, Mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim the month of March, 2022, as American Red Cross Month in the City of Norman, and encourage all Americans to support this organization's noble humanitarian mission. I'd like to recognize Misty McClellan, Executive Director of the Central Southwest Oklahoma American Red Cross, to accept the proclamation.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilmembers. The Red Cross, that's what we do. We're there when help can't wait. We prevent and alleviate human suffering by mobilizing the power of our volunteers and the generosity of our donors. That could not be more true than when we speak of our volunteers here in Norman, and the incredible time, talent, and treasure that they give supporting the people and our friends and neighbors. So on behalf of the volunteers of our chapter, on behalf of our staff, I say thank you very much. Go Red Cross.
On to the consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so that the city council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine agenda items if they wish to be approved or acknowledged by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with approval of all councilmembers, that item will be heard in regular order. Staff recommends the items... Every time. Put it in a different color next time. I don't know what to tell you. Sorry. Council announcements. Councilmember Studley, Ward one.
I literally said every time, under my breath, and you go every time.
My bad.
I love it. I love it. All right. So first, I want to say shout out to Mr. Jason Olson for the snazzy shamrock jacket in the back. If you were here at council meeting, you would see it. So it's just a lovely show. Also, it is National Dental Assistant Week, and Sunday was National Dentist Day. So shout out to our dentists here. Personal shout out to Dr. Gabriel Bird, Dr. Thomas Basie, and Dr. Donna Gallier. They're local dentists here in Norman. And my final announcement is, this weekend on March 12th, there will be a virtual community conversation at 11:00 a.m. to 12:30. It is on my council page, the invitation. It's We for the Kids Community Conversation. It's a local advocacy organization creating a community of support for parents of Oklahoma public school students. It says, "Join us for our first virtual community conversation." And the speakers will be Representative Marilyn Bell, local mom, Adrienne Johnson, an advocate, and myself, Brandy Studley. So we would love for you to join us on that call. That's it.
Thank you. Ward two, Councilmember Schuler.
Thanks. So I'm again going to talk about one of our favorite projects here in Norman since last year, the Emhoff Bridge. I've been getting lots of, I guess, chatter in the Ward two page about its completion date. And I know that we were hopeful that we were going to get it completed early on March 15th. There have been, you know, some delays, but I would like to remind everyone, as city staff has reminded me, that the contract date did specify the week of March 21st, and we still are on schedule for that completion date. So I understand it's a little bit later, and we have been waiting for many months to get this project completed in Ward two. Trust me, I hear about it almost daily. But I have asked city staff to update me with some pictures as we continue to progress. I've been told that, yes, it looks like it is not going to be complete, that there, you know, is still a big hole in the ground there, but that over the next, you know, couple of days, things should progress much faster. So I've asked them to give me some updates and some pictures so that I can show you what that looks like. Again, I would like to remind everybody that there will be a Ward two and Ward four Town Hall about the water rate increase on March 24th at 6:30 at the Norman Central Library. Yes, I know that Turnpike has really caused a lot of conversation, but we're still talking about our election next month. We're still talking about water rate increase and that. So we'd like you to show up and have a conversation. We'll have city staff there. I would also just make mention that there has been a lot going on with the Turnpike. There have been numerous meetings, councilmembers, our state delegation. We are working very hard for you all, and we are continuing to try to move the ball forward in lots of different discussions. And then finally, as Mayor Clark mentioned earlier, happy International Women's Day. And I would just like to say that it has been such an honor to be able to serve with my fellow four women on the council and have a majority of women on this council. So thank you all. Yes. That's it. That’s it.
Thank you. Ward 3, Councilwoman Berlin.
Excuse me. Recently, and believe me, I get emails, multiple emails every day, or contact through social media or something about the placement of the Low Bear Homeless Shelter in vicinity of the LeMond School. I was able to go and take a tour with Mr. Seeright the other day. It’s pretty rough. It’s right there next to it. I just, any of those that are concerned, I’ve been told that it should, we might have some information on it hopefully around the 22nd, that meeting coming up. So stand by is all I can tell you right now, because we’re still looking at legalities and placement of that at this moment. But just know I’m going to bat for you. I don’t like the idea of the placement where it’s at, and we’ll see what we figure out coming up on the 22nd if you’re wondering about that. That’s it.
Thank you. Ward 4, Councilwoman Hall.
I’d like to announce our second Friday Art Walk coming up this Friday, March 11th at 6:00 p.m. in historic downtown Norman. I think we’re all glad to have those back in person and enjoying all of the things that they’re rolling out month by month. Thursday, March 10th, we’re having our Oversight Committee meeting at 4:00 p.m. Those are always open to the public, and you’re welcome to attend. I also want to remind everybody, as we’re approaching our election on April 5th, to have your voting plan in place. So for those of you who have not registered to vote yet, you have until this coming Friday, March 11th, and you can request an absentee ballot through the deadline of Tuesday, March 21st. Also, just wanted to make a couple of comments about our consent docket coming up. I was really struck this week by how many agenda items involve accepting grant money. So instead of spending money, we’re accepting a lot of money to go towards projects that are priority projects here in Norman. So I just wanted to congratulate our city staff through all departments that I have learned over my years on council, work diligently to find every penny that we might qualify for, and we’re really seeing the results of that tonight. So I want people to understand that there’s a lot of work that goes on behind the scenes to be in a position to accept those funds, to move projects forward. I also want to briefly mention, again, because it’s on the consent agenda, that we currently are working on going forward with our Porter Avenue Streetscape, which was a voter-approved project. And I wanted to thank those property owners that we’ve been working with for their collaboration with city staff to help us move forward with that project. It’s a complicated process to get everything in place that we need with our property owners along the Porter Corridor and many other places that we work in in Norman. And there’s multiple parcels here that are involved, and we really appreciate those that have been willing to collaborate and find an agreement on how to move forward with that. And just wanted to point out, again, some of the overarching goals that we have are trying to create a more multimodal community where the emphasis is on pedestrian people and not necessarily moving cars. So I was really excited to see Agenda Item Number 18, which will have a big impact on Ward 4. We’re accepting an ACOG grant to provide bicycle lanes on Webster between Dawes and Duffy and University Boulevard between Apache and Boyd. So really looking forward to that work getting started.
Thank you. Ward 5, Councilwoman Tortorello.
We’ve got a Turnpike coming through Norman. So I just wanted to say to the Ward 5 and the entire City of Norman, the city council members here who are supporting and supporting citizens, this is a big deal. This has affected a lot of people. It’s big news, and it’s big news because it’s potentially going to be moving people off their lands and properties. And I know things are fluid, things are changing, but there’s a lot of online conversations going on on the Ward pages, and, you know, if you’re going to participate in these conversations here, just keep in mind that people are afraid. They’re afraid of the unknown. There’s a lot of unknowns that we’re looking at right now, and rest assured that we are working as a council on your behalf to get as much information out there as possible. We’re meeting with the state representatives and ODOTs and OTA, and our job is to collect as much information as possible so we can disseminate that. So I just wanted to say that I’m in awe with the work the community is doing, working together, sharing data. This is the way Norman is. This is how we do things, and I’m just proud of what I’m seeing so far. Thursday nights, I’m scheduling a Facebook Live on my Ward page, and we’ve got some updates that we’d like to share. And I think we’ll be doing this every week or every other week as new things come forward, just to keep everyone informed of things that the group is doing and information that we’d like to share on a mass scale here. So look for that, that announcement will be going out maybe tomorrow morning. So again, I thank you for all the support you guys are giving to Ward 5. And don’t forget, the Turnpike is going through Indian Hills, so it’s affecting not just Ward 5. It’s a Norman thing here. So again, it’s a Norman issue, and we’re banding together and we’re working together to ensure that the information is received and shared with as many people as possible. So thank you.
Thank you. Ward 6, Councilwoman Foreman.
I just want to note that Councilmember Studley was not wrong. Jason, you were my first comment that I wrote to point out your shamrock jacket. There is no Ron Swanson up in here. You might like me, I don’t know, but as far as humor, you’ve got it, and I appreciate that. Wards 1 and 6 will host a joint meeting at the Eastside Library on Wednesday, March 23rd at 6:30 p.m. Mr. Mattingly scanning somewhere. Hey, Mr. Mattingly will be there to answer all of your questions with a big smile on his face and all the information that he can, so please come to that. Just a reminder to my constituents that on March 25th, I am having a surgery and... That’s hilarious. What? Oh, good. You deserve it. You deserve it. Give him a... I was like... I was like, wow. This about to get very interesting between 3 and 6. I’m just saying.
Councilwoman Foreman, back to you.
I’m all thrown off now. I’m so flunked. Okay. So I am having surgery. Okay, thank you. On March 25th, and so now we’re having the OTA. They’re coming on March 29th. I will not be in attendance, but I will reach out to my constituents to get any questions or concerns that they have, so I can disperse to my fellow council members to make sure that we get those questions answered for you. And then happy International Women’s Day to women young and old, because yes, we can.
Thank you. Ward 7, Councilwoman Holman.
Thank you. Just want to second Councilwoman Hall’s comments about getting registered to vote by this Friday, which is the deadline, 5:00 p.m. To have an opportunity to cast your vote in the April 5th elections here in Norman for... We do have a water rate election, the first one in seven years. And then we also, for some of you, have a Ward 4 runoff, and then some of you have a school board runoff as well. So several important things to be voting on locally here on April 5th. So definitely want to encourage everybody to get registered or update your information if necessary. We will be having a joint Ward 7 and Ward 8 meeting on the 21st at 6:00 p.m. here at City Hall to discuss the water rate increase. We’ll have city staff here to help answer any and all questions that you might have. Anybody from Norman is welcome to come. If you aren’t able to attend the meeting that’s in your ward or whatever it may be, if you want to come to all of them, you’re welcome to. If you want to get all the information and questions, you can get. Happy to also meet with any residents one-on-one and make house calls to anybody that’s interested in discussing this further. I usually have a ward meeting at the Cobblestone Creek Clubhouse, but it is... It had some pretty severe water damage from a fire sprinkler recently, and so it’s all under construction inside. So it’s not available, so I’m thinking either this weekend or next, I might be just going out and setting up on hole number one, and anybody interested in the neighborhood that wants to come out and talk about the water rate can just come on by and we can discuss it. But I’m always available to discuss on the phone or email or in person about the upcoming election and answer any questions you might have. Also, wanted to remind everybody the Community Planning and Transportation Committee meeting on March 24th at 4:00 p.m. every month here at City Hall. It’s a public meeting, and we get an update every month on the public transit ridership report. We get an update on all the projects going on with our public transit system, and we talk about other things like road construction projects, bond projects, and the status of those things. Our last meeting last week, we discussed electric scooters and electric bikes and an issue that’s been at the forefront of many people’s agenda as they’ve seen these scooters laying on the sidewalks and things like that. So we’ve been working on policy for two years now to try to address those. And so in that committee, you’re all welcome to attend or watch on YouTube, but that’s where we discuss those types of issues if that’s of interest to you. Also, wanted to mention that in regard to the Turnpike issue, in the late 90s, the City Council of Norman passed a resolution stating their stance on a proposed outer loop at the time that had been discussed in the 90s. The council, after public meetings and public feedback, passed a resolution in 1999 opposing any kind of construction of a highway loop around Norman, specifically in East Norman. And so I would definitely encourage us to consider passing a similar type resolution. It’s not legally binding. It doesn’t stop anything, but it does help, I think, build a case for our residents that do want to fight this, to know that their city government is aware and supports their stance. So that’s something I would encourage us to think about as we go forward and learn more information about this. And then lastly, just want to mention that I won’t be here on the 29th either because I’ll be in Washington, D.C., meeting with our federal representatives, along with a delegation of Norman representatives, to meet with our federal representatives, talk about important issues regarding Norman and the federal government and funding and things like that. So very excited, this will be my second time to make this trip since I’ve been on council, and it’s definitely very informative and gives us a really good opportunity to meet one-on-one with our federal representatives that have an impact on grant funding and transportation funding and all sorts of things. So looking forward to that. And other than that, I just want to thank all of you for being here tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilwoman Peacock, Ward 8.
Yeah, thanks. I just want to reiterate Councilmember Holman’s comments about the water rate discussion March 21st here at City Hall. If you’re a Ward 8 resident and you’re not able to make that meeting, please feel free to send me all your questions, comments, phone call, text, email, however you need to get ahold of me. Definitely want to take those concerns into the meeting. And as it pertains to the Turnpike, Councilmember Tortorello hit the nail on the head. It’s come down Indian Hills too, so it’s not just Ward 5 that’s getting affected. I’ve heard a lot of the concerns from my constituents, and I just want to say that I hear you, we hear you, and we are looking at every available opportunity and option to see what we can do to impact this thing. So just know that we’re trying to work for you.
Thank you. I’ve got a few announcements. There was a coffee festival at the Cleveland County Fairgrounds this past weekend, but they’ve upped their game. There’s a wine festival this Saturday. So check that out, free admission, and apparently there’s free pictures with the Easter Bunny, so you could bring your kids to a wine festival. Or get your own pictures with the Easter Bunny. I don’t know, whatever you’re in the mood for. So Cleveland County Fairgrounds, Saturday, 9 to 5. If you missed our study session, I’m so very pleased that Norman will be the first city in the state of Oklahoma to have a city poet laureate. And applications for that, nominations will begin shortly, because we would like to have it in place by the Poetry Week, which I think they said was April 22nd. So very exciting for that. We love the arts here in Norman, and it’s nice to add that to our diverse kinds of arts that we celebrate and recognize in our community. I want to thank the Oakland Municipal League for organizing a wonderful Congress of Mayors event at the State Capitol on Thursday and Friday. I was very honored, in spirit of the Women’s History Month and International Women’s Day, to be the first female mayor elected by my colleagues to serve as Speaker of the House. So I got to give a state-of-the-city speech. It was a really neat whole experience. We amended resolutions, debated resolutions, passed resolutions, and we also passed a resolution in support of Ukraine, which I thought was really neat. So well done on that event. I do want to share that I had over an hour-long meeting with Secretary Gatz today, one that should have been had well before this was announced, unfortunately. So I will be... It was right before the meeting, so I will be making a post about it with all of my thoughts. I am not giving up at this point, and I don’t think Norman residents should either. So the resolution that Councilwoman Holman has asked and mentioned, I’ve already asked staff to put it on the agenda for March 22nd. So this is an issue that has united not just our council, but our county and our state delegation. And regardless, if we could have a fortune teller tell us 50 years from now this was the best thing to ever happen to Norman, how it was rolled out is reprehensible. People are traumatized over this, and I’m very, very disappointed. That’s putting it mildly on things that we have had to deal with that could be the poorest rollout I’ve ever seen for such a life-changing project that will impact hundreds of our residents. So I’ll stay tuned for that post. I don’t want to go into it now, but I will be commenting on that, and I look forward to continuing to hear your thoughts. I too will be having maybe weekly Turnpike talks. We’re going to have various people involved in this process jump on with me on Facebook Live. We’ll rotate between Instagram, just so, again, we can keep you in the know about what’s going on, educate you on the process, because for something this big, the more information we can have, the better. And apparently, even though we were left out of the loop, being told it’s now going to be on us to continue to educate our residents, and as you can see, your council is up for the challenge. And finally, next week is spring break, so as I tell my students, make good choices. But we will not have a council meeting on Tuesday, so I know many of us are traveling and... Are you sad, Councilmember Schuler? Dedicated public official, right there, my friends, right there. So I hope you all enjoy your spring break. If you recall, last year, the University of Oklahoma did not have a spring break. So it’s been nice to have one more thing that feels like we’re learning to live with the challenges that we’ve battled for two years, and we’re going to come out on top. So I’m excited for that. And again, mark your calendars, first weekend in April, the Medieval Fair returns. I can practically smell the turkey legs. Last weekend of April, Norman Music Fest returns, and I just gave myself chills. I’m so excited for this, and I’ve talked to many people while I’m out on the doors. Thanks for their mind about the election. I’d totally forgotten about it. But while I’ve been out on the doors, I love talking to people who just moved to Norman, and they’re excited to get involved, and they love the town, and it’s a great city, and I get to tell them, you haven’t even seen the best part yet. So it’s good. I’m feeling very optimistic about the future, and I hope you all are as well. And thank you again to Dr. Bratzler for that very important and finally, optimistic update. So now we’ll go to the consent docket. Not going to read that whole thing again. Staff recommends that items 5 through 29, excluding item 28, be placed on the consent docket. I need a motion to place items 5 through 29, excluding item 28, on the consent docket.
Second.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to place items 5 through 29, excluding item 28, on the consent docket. Council members, you may cast your votes.
Items 5 through 29, excluding item 28, are placed on the consent docket.
Thank you. Item 5, ordinance 2122-36, upon first reading by title, granting special use for bar, lounge, or tavern, and a special use for a mixed building in the C3 Intensive Commercial District located at 205 East Main Street. Item 6, ordinance 40, upon first reading by title, increasing water line connection charges, also known as connection fees. Did everyone hear that? The next five items are for the acceptance of easements associated with the Porter Avenue Streetscape 2019 Bond Project. Item 7, easement 2122-32 from Plaza Inn Incorporated in the amount of $32,404. Item 8, easement 2122-33 from Plaza Inn Incorporated in the amount of $533. Item 9, temporary easement 2122-33 from Plaza Inn Incorporated in the amount of $533. Item 9, temporary easement 2122-34 from Plaza Inn Incorporated in the amount of $5,068. Item 10, temporary easement of 2122-35 donated by EDO LLC. Item 11, easement 2122-36 from the Jesse M. Vaughn 2003 Revocable Trust in the amount of $500. Item 12, easement 2122-37 from Physicians and Surgeons Medical LLC in the amount of $5,725. Item 13, Norman Rural Certificate of Survey and a variance in the minimum acreage requirement for tract 8 for Oak Hill Ranch and easement 2122-31 located at the intersection of 108th Avenue Southeast and Etowah Road. Item 14, amendment number 1 to contract 2021-18, Nelson Nygard Consulting Associates Incorporated increasing the contract in an amount not to exceed $16,952 for a revised contract amount of $166,952 to amend the Transit Long Range Plan, Go Norman Transit Plan, to reflect the proposed location of the new Transit Center and conduct additional analyses related to Transit Center operations and budget appropriation as outlined in the staff report. Item 15, change order number 2 to contract with Rudy Construction Company, increasing the contract amount by $184,533.80 for a revised contract amount of $2,810,441.45, and adding 203 calendar days to add an additional project for stormwater improvements on University Boulevard and budget transfer as outlined in the staff report. Item 16, change order number 1 to contract 2021-61 between the Norman Utilities Authority and Semeron Construction Company LLC, increasing the contract amount by $44,972.35 for a revised contract amount of $1,458,235, and adding 30 calendar days for the Interstate Drive Water Line Replacement Project, final acceptance of the project, and final payment in the amount of $76,934.07. Item 17, bid and contract 2122-86 with Matthews Trenching Company Incorporated in the amount of $799,630, and associated bonds for the 36th Avenue Northwest Phase 2 Water Line Relocation Project and adoption of a resolution granting tax-exempt status. Item 18, acceptance of the Association of Central Oklahoma Governments Air Quality Small Grant Program funding in the amount of $11,402 to provide bicycle lanes along Webster Avenue between Dawes and Duffy Streets and University Boulevard between Apache and Boyd Streets. Contract 2122-94 and budget appropriation as outlined in the staff report. Item 19, contract 2122-101 between the Association of Central Oklahoma Governments and the City of Norman for reimbursement in an amount not to exceed $20,000 for the collection of traffic data and budget appropriation as outlined in the staff report. Item 20, acceptance of a hazardous mitigation assistance grant from the Oklahoma Department of Energy Management and Homeland Security in the amount of $150,000 to be used for the Midway Drive Stormwater Project Scoping Contract 2122-102 and budget appropriation as outlined in the staff report. Item 21, acceptance of a hazard mitigation assistance grant from the Oklahoma Department of Emergency Management and Homeland Security in the amount of $100,000 to be used for a flood warning system development project, contract 2122-103, and budget appropriation from the special grant fund and the capital fund balance as outlined in the staff report. Item 22, acceptance of a hazard mitigation assistance grant from the Oklahoma Department of Emergency Management and Homeland Security in the amount of $893,590.45 to be used for the Vineyard Drainage Improvement Project, contract 2122-104, and budget appropriation from the special grants and capital fund balance as outlined in the staff report. Item 23, contract 2122-105 with Cohen Group Engineering in the amount of $80,000 to provide engineering services for the design of FYE 2023 urban reconstruction projects on Fairfield Drive and Juniper Lane, and budget appropriation as outlined in the staff report. Item 24, acceptance of a congestion mitigation air quality small grant in the amount of $186,000 from the Association of Central Oklahoma Governments to be used to build two electric vehicle charging stations located at City Hall, contract 2122-107, and budget appropriations as outlined in the staff report. Item 25, acceptance of a congestion mitigation air quality small grant from the Association of Central Oklahoma Governments in the amount of $120,000 to be used for an eligible transit improvement project consisting of new bus stops associated with the recommended route network in the Go Norman Transit Plan. Approval of contract 2122-109 and budget appropriation as outlined in the staff report. Item 26, contract 2122-110, a lease buy-in between the Norman Utilities Authority and Dish Wireless LLC in the amount of $2,500 per month to allow antenna space on Brookhaven Water Tower for a period of five years. Item 27, acceptance of a grant in the amount of $10,000 from the National Association of City and County Health Officials to support the efforts of the Emergency Management Medical Reserve Corps Volunteer Program for the Fire Department, contract 2122-111, and budget transfers as outlined in the staff report. Item 28 has been removed from the consent docket. Item 29, Resolution 2122-100, authorizing settlement of the workers' compensation claim filed by Stacy Aaron Clement, directing the legal department to then file such settlement and all attendant costs in the Workers' Compensation Commission, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, and authorizing and directing the finance director to subsequently purchase such Workers' Compensation Commission judgment from the Risk Management Insurance Fund. I need a motion to approve or reject the consent docket.
So moved.
Second. Thank you. Are there any comments from council regarding any item on the consent? Seeing none, the motion on the floor is to approve the consent docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to approve the consent docket passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item 28, Resolution 2122-98, appropriating $149,454 from the capital fund balance to complete the purchase of five 3500 Dodge Pro Master vans for the public transportation fleet that have been previously approved by City Council on December 14th, 2021. I need a motion to adopt or reject the resolution.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from council regarding this item? Seeing none, this is an operating for the public to make comments regarding this item. Are there any public comments? And since this was removed from consent, we will allow you to come up if you have any. Seeing none, any final comments from council regarding this item? Seeing none, the motion on the floor is to adopt the resolution. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion passes by a vote of 8 to 1, voting against Councilmember Lynn.
Thank you. Item 30, Resolution 2122-101, authorizing the acquisition of certain real property for the purpose of the Porter Streetscape 2019 Bond Project in the City of Norman, and declaring the necessity for acquiring said property for roadway improvements, including sidewalk utility and drainage purposes, and authorizing initiation of eminent domain proceedings for that purpose. I need a motion to approve or reject the consent docket.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from council regarding this item?
I just want to, with all the talk about eminent domain and how it's affecting the city now, I'd like a discussion, at least an explanation of how eminent domain is being used in this situation. So, thank you, Mr. Leary.
Thank you, Mayor Council. I'm really envious of Jason's jacket, being in O'Leary. I should be wearing the jacket, shouldn't I? Find out where you got that. Happy to offer information, Councilmember Tortorello, on the project, but this is a very complicated legal matter, and I'll look to City Attorney Catherine Walker to speak to maybe the legal issues. I'm happy to fill in the blanks on the actual tangible project.
So, eminent domain is authorized under the state constitution and state law for various government agencies to use, the city being one of those. Basically, it authorizes you to acquire property through a court process. You cannot do that without just compensation, that's guaranteed through the Fifth and Fourteenth Amendment to the Constitution. And the city has to show that the property is both necessary and that it's for public use. Roadways are long, have long been considered public uses, so that's not typically an issue for us. So, typically, we have tried to negotiate with the property owner long before we get to the point of eminent domain. We provide them an appraisal if their property is valued at over $10,000. We negotiate with them, and we're looking at it from sort of two perspectives. One, we want to be fair to the property owner, they are your constituents after all, but we also want to be considerate of the fact that we are using taxpayer dollars. So, we work with the property owner to try and determine what the gap is and what they think the value is and what we think the value is. And if they're, if they have information we don't have, we will negotiate that price up to what is justifiable. If not, and we just can't reach a settlement, and we've come to an impasse, we'll ask you all to file, for permission to file eminent domain. Once you get into court for eminent domain, they can contest the use of necessity, and they can contest the compensation. Compensation is determined by a court appointment of three commissioners. Commissioners is kind of a funny term, it's really appraisers. And we get, we work with the other side and choose three appraisers to come in and value the property. Whatever they value the property is the value that we can then pay into court, and we get the right to that property as long as the necessity in public use is not being contested. So, we get the right to the property, but we can continue litigating the value of the property and the compensation there, long beyond that, but it allows us to move forward with the project. If the commissioner's award is 10% higher than what we had offered, then we have to pay attorney's fees and things like that. And the same goes for if the private property owner, if the commissioner's award is 10% less than what we offered, they may have to pay attorney's fees. So, there's a lot of balance in the system, but really, it's to ensure that taxpayer dollars are protected and that property owners are protected. And so, for us, we've always said when we file eminent domain, this is just the next step to us. We have not, since I've been here 15 almost 16 years, we have not had a trial on value. We have filed a number of eminent domains and then continued to negotiate, because we want everyone to walk away with something that feels fair for the city and feels fair for the property owner. So, for us, this is really just the next step. We continue to negotiate, and we hope to bring back settlements for you all on all of these properties.
And I'll just add, if I may, Councilor, this is a last resort for us. We really dislike bringing these to you. Unfortunately, it's become an annual process. Almost every project that we build here in Norman, despite our best efforts, as Catherine mentioned, we bring our best project managers, we hire outside appraisers and negotiators and engineers in-house and so on, try really hard, as we did here in the Porter Streetscape project, to negotiate with each of the, in this case, 15 different property owners for 20 different easements. But we've gotten to the end of that road, if you will. I think as of today, we've successfully secured 17 of the 20 easements, we're down to our final three. Those owners, for whatever reason, have stopped negotiating with us, and we are at the end of our rope here to complete the project. If we don't acquire the easements, we don't get the federal money. It expires on October 1st, and we have to have these easements to build the sidewalks and other streetscape improvements, so we're stuck here. If we can't get the easements, we can't advance a project. If we can't advance a project, we lose the federal funding.
How much money will we be losing if we don't make the target?
Let me look at that. I'm remembering about $2 million in federal funds and about $1 million, $5 million seven in local bond funds. Am I in the ballpark? Okay, yeah, I'm in the ballpark here. So, about $2 million in federal funds, and it really is the only way we'll complete the project. There are not enough bond funds to complete this project with local dollars.
Okay, and we've exhausted all avenues to reach a settlement.
We have, but as Catherine mentioned, we are here frequently, unfortunately, on our projects, and she's exactly right that after, or if you choose to approve this resolution this evening, it tends to motivate the property owners. It works almost every time that they realize that, okay, we're now filing for this, and 99% of the cases, they then negotiate with us and we settle outside of court. It's unfortunate it's taking that, but that's become almost standard practice on these larger projects, and I think the other council members here have experienced it, again, once or twice a year.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Leary.
You're welcome.
Any other comments from council regarding this item? Councilmember Holman.
Thank you. Catherine, just for the record, to be clear, on this project on Porter, we're not proposing to take any structures, we're not displacing any businesses or any homes. We're really asking for a few feet on the frontage of properties so that we can replace the sidewalk and make ADA sidewalk improvements. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, just want to be clear that we're not doing this as a way to take anybody's house or business or make anybody move. We're talking about feet on the frontage of a road, a busy street, to fix the curbs, fix the sidewalk, make it safer for people to travel through that area. Just wanted to be clear that that's the, since that is a big sore topic at the moment for a lot of people, that we're not taking anybody's, anybody's stuff. So, thank you.
Thank you for that clarification, Councilmember Holman. Councilmember Shuler.
Yeah, that was my question as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hall.
Yeah, and just to add to that clarification, I'm actually glad that we've had this opportunity to put this information out to the public, especially in regards to what we're all trying to learn about as it regards to the Oklahoma Turnpike Authority. I also just want to remind everyone that this was also a voter-approved project. This is not a project that we just made up. It was part of our transportation bond in 2019? Yeah, 2019. So, this literally was a project approved by our voters here in Norman that they wanted to proceed with a project like this.
Thank you. Seeing no other council comment, this is an operating for the public to make comment regarding this item. Do we have any public comment? Seeing none, any final comments from council regarding this item? Seeing none, the motion on the floor is to adopt the resolution. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast. Resolution passes by a vote of 7 to 2, voting against Councilmember Tortorello and Councilmember Lynn.
Now, we are on to miscellaneous comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address City Council. Due to Open Meeting Act regulations, council is not able to participate in discussion during miscellaneous comments. Remarks should be directed to the council as a whole and limited to three minutes or less. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up for tonight?
We do have one speaker, Dan Munson.
I'm Dan Munson from Ward 6. I believe it's common knowledge that recruiting for new police officers has been challenging not only for the Norman Police Department, but for other departments throughout the country. We're seeing record sign-on bonuses being offered in Oakland, California. They're offering a $20,000 bonus for new officers, and for veteran officers, they're offering $50,000. We're also seeing base pay go up throughout the country. In Chicago, the Chicago Police Union was offered 20% increase in base pay, and that included $377 million of back pay. So, some pretty significant dollars. I believe that cities that can strategically think through these challenges might be able to overcome them. I believe it starts with creating an environment where police officers from other departments come to Norman. So, how do you create that? I think you do that through training. So, what kind of training is needed? What's a highly-desired training for police officers right now? I believe it's crisis intervention team training. What if the city of Norman became a center of excellence for CIT training? As you remember, CIT training isn't just for police, it's also for fire, EMS, dispatch. What if the city of Norman partnered with other entities in the community to develop a world-class CIT training facility? What if police officers from other communities came to Norman for a week of training and liked our community? Perhaps we could allow those opportunities to present themselves. Because the slots for CIT training are so limited, this could potentially be a profit center for the city. This could also generate much-needed hotel and sales tax revenue for our visitors who are attending the training. This could also be a place where the city puts officers and firemen who are on light duty because of injury, or those who need their own mental health break for the public. What would they do? Support the scenario-based training modules that are so critical to CIT training. Councilpeople from both past and present councils have expressed an interest in getting more public safety teams CIT trained. This helps that too. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, everyone. This meeting is adjourned.